Pleasant good evening everyone, we are off to a very late start this evening. But we are thankful as the song was just saying there, a while ago, we are thankful to God for life and for this opportunity to gather once more. It's truly, truly amazing. How especially on our Bible study sessions, for our Bible study sessions, there are always some sort of hiccups, there are always some sort of distractions, you know, things to kind of throw you off of what you're really supposed to be thinking about. However, we just continue to give God thanks and praise for this opportunity to gather once again. So at this time, seeing that we are already this late, it's now six eighteen. So at this time, I will just ask Mother Walcott to open us in a short with a prayer and then we will go right into this evening's session. Mother Walcott.
Bless evening to each and everyone. Father, open our eyes to see and our ears to hear what you want to communicate specifically to us today. Oh Lord of forces, you will command all the earth, no one and nothing compares to you. Your name is precious and worthy of all honour and all praise. Father, you form us into the people you want us to be. Hold us, search us and honor our heart, oh God, you who is the King of kings and the Lord of lords. Father, draw us close to you. You who is all powerful, you who is almighty, you is all gracious this evening. Open our hearts, open our minds, open us oh Lord God to receive what is to come this evening, oh Lord God. Father, you help us to be a better people. Help us oh Lord God to be the people that you want us to be and not what we ourselves want to be, Lord Jesus. Father, I am going to bless Mother James this evening. Bless Sister Ford, Father, Sister Kershaw, Sister Christie, Brother Kevin, Kevin Ron. Father, but a Mike, Sister Mike, Father bless them all this evening, Father, and all who is on this platform. Mother Joanie this evening, oh Lord God, Father, and everyone who is here this evening. Father, some that I don't even know their names, but I pray, oh Lord God, you're going to bless us and you're going to keep us and you're going to give us an open heart and open mind this evening to receive all that we have taught this evening and all that we discussed this evening. In Jesus Almighty name I pray, amen and amen and amen. There was taught us when we pray to say, our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day as we forgive those that trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen and amen and amen. Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you very much, Mother Walcott. So I will hand it right over to Sister Kershaw, Sister Pamela, who's on that side, six twenty-one. So we'll go right into this evening's session, session. Over to you, Sister Kershaw. Thank God for bringing you home safely. Is Sister Kershion speaking? Or is it just me who can't hear?
I am not hearing them either.
Okay, okay, all right. I now see Sinbad.
I, I have to start over. This is so hilarious.
I, I, this is a crazy thing. I'm going to ask you just, let me just come out and restart because I don't know what's going on.
No, um. The devil trying to do something this evening, but he's a liar. He is a liar this evening. We put him on our feet this evening. Get the hands, Satan. Get the hands.
I know, I really have to laugh, you know, because I was saying every Wednesday, every Bible study Wednesday.
Every Bible study.
Every Bible study, the prayer meetings go really smoothly and then it's Bible study Wednesday.
Yep, yep.
I mean, I mean, I left work ten minutes late. It's not something that usually happens. I usually leave at four in the day, probably just a little bit before four. And any traffic, I mean, traffic is terrible from north, from north to south. But today it was terrible and it was when you reach up to like Clapton Bay, it's nothing. I said nothing both times. I was like, okay, fine, let me see what happened in here. And then I get home and immediately I start feeling exhausted. I say, okay, nice, wonderful. But as I was saying, when I was on mute, the song that I was about to play before Sister Mason started talking to open was Marvin Saps Close and the song says, "I must be close to what God has for me because here comes trials and confusions and envy and all kind of thing." So you know what? Let's just push through. It means that clearly we on the right path. So let's make this session a great one. And let's maximize this time. You know, you know, you know, once we try to seek knowledge, the devil is trying to, always, always. But shake it off and let's, let's get started. So we're talking about David today. And we were given some, some pieces of scripture to read. Obviously, I do not expect that everybody would read all of it because it's a lot. Right? When you think about the chapters that have, and the accounts that have to be read about David and David in itself, in his, well, his account is very large, right? And multiple stories. He spans many books, right? In the Old Testament. And he's mentioned in New Testament a couple of times, obviously, as well. Right? So for today, if you have your outline open, we're just going to focus on that first block number one today. So at the very least, we should have read Second Samuel twelve and then really other two, uh, one verse each in First Corinthians ten thirteen and First John, chapter one, verse nine. So let's start with the account of Second Samuel, chapter twelve. And again, as usual, I encourage you all to please participate. When I initially send the verses, I asked you all to, even though we didn't have the outline at time, I asked you all to start reading and take notes. So I hope that you all were taking notes as you were reading the account that happened in that Second Samuel chapter there. Right? So this chapter is a continuation of David and Bathsheba's interaction. All right, we know that David did something that was unbecoming of a man of God. We talked about the fact that, you know, he was a part of a particular culture and we talked about also that even though he was a man after God's own heart, at some point, we felt as if he had let that get to his head a little bit. And so he felt comfortable enough to do what he did. And it ended up with, with murder, which and, and it was not just murder, it was murder of somebody who was completely loyal to him. So it wasn't as if Uriah was an enemy in the other, as with the other instances where he got his wives. And he was, you know, essentially stonin' to defend himself, more or less, right? This was where somebody had essentially pledged their lives to him and he was so driven by lust and I guess a little bit of power as well, a little bit of ego got, got, um, he was displaying a little bit of ego as well and so he did this thing. So in the chapters that follow that account, David seemed to be living comfortably with what he had done. He was already thinking about it because he had already, I mean, Bathsheba had gone through her mourning period for Uriah. And, you know, they were living together as husband and while he married her, right? And she had had the child and whatever that came out of that incident. And in this chapter, the prophet Nathan was sent by God to let David know, to remind David of who God was essentially, because like he seemed to forget in that moment there. And so Nathan came to him and he didn't just tell him, well, David, you're a man that just committed a sin against God, da, 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 da. He could have gone that way, but instead he decided to let David come to his own conclusion. Because David was a wise man, smart. So he told David this, he brought it to him in the form of a parable slash what I would think complaint because kings and they used to hear complaints and they had their judges, of course. But he knew that if he had brought it this way, David would have understood as a king who was supposed to be somebody who pronounced judgment, right? Essentially a judge, they had judge. So he told him this episode of a man who had this, this poor man who had this ewan and this rich guy who, I guess, they were neighbors sort of. And the rich guy had essentially this party. And rather, and he had, mind you, he had many flocks of sheep and all kinds of thing and this poor man had like this one little person, this, this little lamb that he loved so much, like as a pet, right? And rather than go to his flock, he decided that he would take the, whoops, he would take the ewe or the lamb of the poor man. All right? And he took it, killed it and gave his friends. It was, it was a fiction, it was fictional, but that, that story that Nathan used to bring the point across. I mean, if we think about it, that the, the, the rich man had no reason to go that route. He had everything that he could ever want right in his backyard and he could afford to kill a few sheep. He could afford to kill a few animals as well. But he decided to fixate on this person's animal. I guess, and to me, it spells, I could be wrong, but to me, it kind of spells contempt for his guests, whoever his guest was. Because he probably felt as if, well, my animal is not good enough for them. I will take somebody else's animal and just kind of use it. So I go spare my riches and they could just get whatever. I don't know, that kind of seems off to me, but I agree. Anyway, that's a sidebar. So David, of course, gets enraged, as all of us would, if we're hearing something like that. And immediately David just like flies into this, uh, what do you call that? This self-righteous rage, you know, how he could do this and saying, who is that man and I want to organize, then we kill him, da, 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 da. And Nathan calmly tells him, you are the man who took the poor man's, then he spelled it out for him. And David, when he, when everything finally clicked, he said he's sin against God and et cetera, et cetera. And Nathan told him, well, you know, God has, God not pleased with you essentially, and he forgive you, so you're not going to die. However, what will happen to you is that your, the sword will never leave your house essentially. His whole, they would always be fighting. There would be no peace in his house, right? Yes, there would be no peace in his house essentially. And of course, there were other punishments, but I will let some of us tell us what the other punishments were. But all in all, that was what happened with, when the pronouncement came from God through Nathan. Right? So a couple of things that I gathered in, in reading that account. At the end of it, what we realized is that David still had a moral compass. He, that never left him. He, he sinned, yes, and even though in a moment he did not pick up, okay, well, this was, this is the wrong thing to do. It never, his moral compass, his sense of value never left him. What does that mean? It means simply that all of us, even those of us who feel like we are above and beyond, all of us are able to fall at the end of it. Right? So that's why we have to constantly be on our guard, constantly be checking in with ourselves and our thought processes and things that we, we think we need to bury, or things that we don't even pay attention to. All of us are able, as well as we think we are doing, all of us are able to fall and we need to constantly check in with ourselves, even though we have that quote-unquote sense of self, where we're crisis concerned. Right? It's a everyday thing. As we continue to say, this Christian race is a everyday thing. It doesn't mean you get a certain amount of years and you could stop worrying and you can lay back and, well, I can do no wrong. It's an everything, everyday thing. You have to be perceptive every day of what it is you're doing. And the second thing that I picked up is the human being always wants what they can't have and that is simply tied to lust, right? Lust is not just sexual as it was with David in this case. Sometimes you can lust after material things, we can lust after relationships that other people have. So we know young people like to talk about, I mean, young people, like I know young, eh? So, no, so our generation has this thing like couple goals, right? Where we look at a particular couple and we think, oh my gosh, I want to be like them. And sometimes it gets us in a little bit of trouble because we rush into trying to get what they have. And we don't know what going on between, behind the people's closed door. We don't know what they're going through and yet we still want what they have. We can lust after people's jobs, people's positions, we can lust after people's lives, the lives that they have, the things that they have, that we fall into material things. And all those other things, we talk about the sexual lust and where we term that as lust, but those other kinds of lust, the Bible calls that covetousness. Right? Coveting what other people have. And that could very well lead you down the road to some larger sins, right? Wanting what people have and, and not, well, not larger, not larger, let me just say that, not larger. Other sins, I'm saying that it's not larger, no sin is bigger than the other. Have to remind myself of that. Right? But essentially, it can lead us to committing other sins. And one of the sins that it could lead to is adultery. Because we can become so focused on wanting that one thing that we forget, we forget God and we, we let that take the place of God in our lives. So again, that requires us checking in with ourselves and nothing is wrong with wanting nice things for yourself. As a matter of fact, you should want nice things for yourself. But at the end of the day, we have to be very careful about where we place those things. And even when we desire the things, they should be brought to God first of all, right? Even when we want those things. And well, I guess he will decide whether or not we're ready for it, if we need, if we, if we need it at all or if you're there, you can have it. All right? So that's the second thing that I, I noted, right? So that, that lust thing there, we have to be, and that requires checking in with yourself and being honest with yourself. Because sometimes we have the thought and, you know, we quick to say, sorry, we quick to say, you know, oh, I rebuke that, okay. But before you rebuke it, ask yourself why I had the thought in the first place? Because it could be coming from a deep place of, I don't want to say dissatisfaction alone, but it could be a place of genuine need, right? It could be a place of genuine need and it, it is, it is on you to, to explore that. And well, if it's something that you have to rebuke, well, rebuke it. If it's something that you know that you need to bring to God, well, do that. Don't just ignore the thought and I rebuke that and it's sitting in the back of your head making roots. Make sure that you, you understand where it's coming from and try and sort yourself out that way. Go through the process. It's going to be uncomfortable. Trust me. It's going to be very uncomfortable, but go through it. Right? Just wanna stop and give my truth out of the rest. Come. Anybody has any notes they want to share? Before, while I drink some water, please.
Sister Chris, Sister Kershaw, I have something I want to share here, some observation that I, I observed. There are some lessons to be learned from this dark period in David's life. Beware of idleness. Beware of exposing nakedness. Beware of letting the eyes and mind dwell on sinful things. Never think that unconfess sin can be covered up. Beware of thinking it can't happen to me. Even the strongest person can easily slip at any moment, at any hour. Any Christian anyway can be caught off guard and can fail God miserably. David, after being confronted by the prophet Nathan, acknowledged his sin and his sin was forgiven. But David reaped what he sowed. The wages of that sin continued to pay bitter dividend for many years. The child born to Bathsheba died. David eldest son, Iman, fell into shameful immortality with his half-sister Tima. Another son, Absalom, led a rebellion against his father's kingdom. Absalom was a young man with a mannerism that attract people. Soon he stood up a widespread rebellion against David and David had to flee from the city of Jerusalem in this grace. To continue living in sin will bring dreadful consequences. True, the sin can be forgiven, but the Bible doesn't create the impression that people get away with their sin or that God approves of it. If we go to Second Samuel, chapter eleven, verse twenty-seven, says, "But the thing that David had done displeased the Lord." Thank you.
Thank you, Sister Walcott. Anybody else?
Okay, let me just jump in here quickly. Sister Walcott gave us the, a kung dance nutshell again. So I'm looking at David being one of the greatest kings that ever reigned. And still for all, it saddens me every time we hear his name that one of the first things we think about when we, when we talk about David or we hear his name is about this incident that he had. And this incident was because of lust, it was lust, it was adultery, it was a cover-up and it was murder. And one of the things that I remember this, I remembered when I was going through this up to last night. I remember one of Reverend James' favorite scriptures, which is in James one, James chapter one, verses twelve to fifteen. I don't want to go through the whole thing, go through the whole thing, but it's all important. But verse thirteen says, "Let no man see, when he is tempted, that I am tempted of God. For God cannot be tempted, but even neither, neither tempted he any man." But verse fourteen says, "But every man is tempted when he is drawn away of his own lust and enticed. Then lust, when it had conceived, it bringeth forth sin. And sin, when it is finished, bringeth forth death." And I mean, if we don't want to believe that he would have gone this through, I mean, I mean, this, this, this picture of David and this incident, I mean, lets us know that really we cannot, we cannot, huh, I don't want to say, play with sin, you know? We, we, we have to be very cautious, Sister Kershaw, as you kept reminding us, is, is something that we need to be checking on ourselves daily. And I think you and also Sister Walcott just now just mentioned that and we should never think, none of us should ever think that we are in such a place that it's something like, like this. Or, or as you were going through other things too, Sister Kershaw, that other things, sin, could not happen to us also. We have to be on our guard at all time. And really, the first point you have here, where it said that David had a choice and truly, life is made up of choices. We always have a choice, you know? And that was, that was David's choice. But the thing about it is, is that the, the devil never shows us the bottom line. So it will look good here and it will feel good for a moment, but we never really think consequences. And the, and the consequences of, of David's action, I mean, not only affected him, but it redone it to his whole family, to his entire family, as, as we, you said before, Sister Kershaw, when we read the account here. His whole family, we, we see brother and sister and brother kill and then a whole set of people and, and, and even he, David having to run from his own son and all of this kind of thing, you know? And so as somebody said one, once, I think Sister needing to, in the study of despise, when we, when we do things, it not only affects us, but it affects our generation. And we see that really, really played out in David's life. But I love that at least at the end of the story, and when I say story, I know what I mean, at the end of the story of David's life with this incident, I thank God that he had a really beautiful ending. David had a really beautiful ending. And what made the ending of David's story for this incident so beautiful is that he truly was a man after God's own heart. The, in the, the chapter here starts us off with Nathan going to David. And I think this is such a wonderful example for all of us as children of God or all of us who are, well, yes, all of us as children of God, not only people, not only people who are in position, but all of us as children of God. We can take a pattern from Nathan and don't always be too quick to jump down somebody's throat or because you know something about them, just go and confront them, you know, like that, just raw, just so, just raw. So I mean, God sent Nathan, yes. But so, so we too, if we feel that there is something that we, that somebody did or whatever, that we need to talk to them about, I think we really need to go to God and see if we can get some wisdom like Nathan had when he approached David. Because had he gone in a different manner, the story may not have ended the way did fight of them. But I think that Nathan's example is a very good one that we should emulate and be wise, that, that, that took wisdom. And as I said, David's story ended well because he was, as God said, truly a man after his own heart. And we know, we know why he was, it's his humility and his faith in God and, you know, different things like that. His integrity and, and having a forgiving heart and because of that, he was able to confess. I think it's the second scripture, First Corinthians ten thirteen, no, First John one nine, where it says that if we confess our sins, God is faithful and just to forgive and so on. And so this, this too, we have to learn that no matter where we, who we are, no matter what our position is, as long as, especially, especially as long as we are children of God, representatives of Christ. I mean, make mistakes. We ought to own up to our mistakes, confess, thank God, we have God that he is able to, he's willing and able to hear us. He is our advocate. We can go confess our sins. He's faithful and he is just. So sometimes the just part we have to live with, but because he's faithful, he will forgive. And not only that, but he will also restore. Thank you very much.
Yes, Sister Mason, that is so true, especially the part about God being faithful and just to forgive us of our sins. And I just wanna kind of clear up, so, because, because, you know, David is one of the persons that the Bible speaks about that Christians hold in high regard, as they should. Because David, you know, really and truly, he did some great exploits for God and, and for the most part, for the majority of it, ninety-nine percent of it, he was, he did, he, he was righteous, right? Put it like that. So when we talk about David and. His, his, his sin that he committed, it's not to try to condemn David. What I want us to get is that these persons in the Bible are very much human. They're not martyrs, they are not superheroes, and they're definitely nowhere near God. And why I want to reemphasize, where we want to reemphasize this is because we want to kinda get into our heads that. God can use anybody in any capacity. There is no quote unquote right person. Or there's no thing that you need to do in order to be qualified for whatever. Once God calls you, you already qualify. If God, God is going to call you if you're not ready, right? So David, when we talk about this, it's not to make David seem bad or to make him seem like this villainous person, cause he was not. He fell and he fell because he was a human being, right? And because he let his God down. So talking about his sin as well helps us understand, listen. Or as much as close as we feel like we are to God, we are all up and it could happen to us too. So it keeps us humble as well, right? And we're going this way because we, we talked about Bashir, when we talk about the women, so we started from a familiar place. Cause that's how you learn things. You start with what you know and then you go on to other things that might not be so familiar to you. So that's why we're proceeding this way instead of going backwards and talking about David and Goliath and all these, the other stuff that David did. And the soul and David and thing, we'll get to that, but we just want to cover this because. This Bible study is supposed, when you, when you study the Bible, you're supposed to be learning. And learning things to help improve your Christian life, as a matter of fact, to improve your entire life. Because God cares about your. Um, kind of life as well. Some of the things, I mean. God cares about your kind of life. He cares about what goes on there. He cares about your spiritual standing, of course, most of all. But he does care about your kind of life as well. He cares about you. That's the whole bottom line. And that's why we're discussing this. That's why we're going, the way we're going. So that we can improve overall. It doesn't make sense that your spiritual life improved and you're so oblivious. Kindly that you just walk into some situations that could endanger your entire purpose. Right? You have to be smart, kindly smart, and you have to be spiritually smart as well. This is why we're going through this, so that you could understand that as great as these people are, were for God. They had their faults as well and it didn't stop them from being great for God, right? So um, we talk about, we talk about David's, David's, well, David's episode because of that. But we'll get to the great stuff in a bit, alright? Fear not. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My little contribution, I was looking at the second one. Can coincide with what Sister Kusel was saying. And um, first Corinthians thirteen, I want to go back to verse twelve. Because sometimes we feel that this can't happen to us. So I want to read from verse twelve, wherefore, let him that thinketh he standeth, take heed lest he fall, he fail. Fall, is it fall? And then it goes on to say, they had no temptation taken you, but such as is common to man. But God is faithful, who will not suffer you to be tempted above that ye are able. But will with the temptation also make a way to escape, that he may be able to bear it. So first of all, we can't get ourselves to that stand where we feel, nah, that ain't gonna happen to me, you know? Because while you boasting on yourself, it will creep up right on you, alright? But God has already put something in place, even if you are tempted, anything that is common to man. It means anything that could happen to man, he has already put something in place. And he's not going to allow you to be soft, to be tempted above what we are able to bear. But he has a way of escape. It's just that we sometimes don't look for the escape, you know? We don't notice that there's a way to escape. And um, so I was looking at that point, even though when we are tempted, just like David was. God would make a way out for us. So there was a way out for David. He just didn't notice it in his, in his lust and all of that. He didn't realize, look, I can get away from this. So that's my little contribution.
And so funny that you brought that part up, because the very next note that I have was David's solution to all of this madness. Was that he should have simply gone to war.
Yes.
He should have simply gone to fight with all the other fellows where he should have been in the first place. Nobody knows the reason that he was at home, so we cannot, I can't, I can't, I can't speak to that. However, what we know is, he was at home. He should not have been there. And even though he found himself in that predicament on the roof. Nothing, I don't know what failed in him that, I mean, we said that, you know, he probably got. A little bit, his ego started to take over when he realized of, he probably realized all the stuff that was happening with him and that. You know, he's winning all these battles and his wars and, and thing, probably forget a little bit that God was the one controlling the shona. Yeah, he probably forget. Was short of, that's what happened. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, so he, he, he felt a little comfortable, get a little, you know, complacent. And he was at home, but even when he was there on the roof, nothing in him at the time said, bye. People, they didn't let me turn around and go inside, give her some privacy. Nothing in it. Everything that took over him, the only thing that took over him was the lust. And human beings who, I, I mean, I, I maybe, maybe I am the only person that is not so Christian here. But lust is something that is extremely dangerous, completely dangerous. And if you sit with it long enough, you could find yourself in some trouble. You, you cut that according to this, Sister Allison, that's one of the sins that you really shouldn't be playing with. And I can't remember what part of the Bible says this, but it is the only one that. The instruction is to flee, not to stand up and pray about it, not to stand up and rebuke it in the name of Jesus. It says flee, meaning run, get out of it, go, get out of the situation completely, remove yourself. Because God knows, he created that emotion for his purpose. We can't handle that by ourselves, right? Um, so that took over him and well, things just went downhill, pending fast from there, right? So my point for that was, we ought not to put ourselves in places where our weaknesses could thrive, right? We should be aware of our weaknesses. It's perfectly fine to have a weakness. In our weaknesses, we are able to thrive because we have God's strength in us. And even where we are weak, he is strong and we are able to draw on his strength together, right? That's what he's there for. He's our Father, he able to give that to us. But we need to be aware of what our weaknesses are. Again, it requires us sitting with ourselves, sometimes being really quiet. And just sitting with your thoughts and not making noise and doing all the things that you normally. You know, cause sometimes we have a quiet time with God and sometimes it really just needs to be a quiet time, like just shush and think. And sometimes the things that comes to your brain, you know, really, really helps it to reflect on what's going on with you. So you have to be aware of your weaknesses and in being aware of that, you need to bring it to God and, and help. Ask him to help you find a solution to, I don't know, work on it. And again, it's an everyday thing that you will have to work on probably for the rest of your life. But the point is, you have to be aware of it so that you can be able to confront it and have an exit strategy, which God will obviously provide. Anybody else wants to contribute?
Evening to all. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, go ahead.
Right, wonderful. Alright, we thank God for having another session again. Now, one of the things that we. Auto. Taken to account whenever we read. Any story, but particularly this one with David, because there is an outstanding. Uh, we could say idol or, or clear violation of God law. So that automatically put David in a position that with man. Whatever account we read of him after that. Because we are mortal and because we know. And we ought to be careful because according to somebody, at least we find ourselves in the same situation. Because we know what David did. And the Bible publicly show him up because that was for David's own good, so that he, he would have changed his, his behavior. In, um, verse thirteen in chapter twelve, um, of second Samuel, it says. And David said unto Nathan, I have sinned against the Lord. And Nathan said to David, the Lord hath put away thy sin, thou shall not die. When we look at verse twenty one, um, yeah. Right, twenty. Then David arose and from the earth. And washed and anointed himself and changed his apparel. So we could take that word there. And all the experience from the Old Testament, bring it into the act of repentance. Because we want, as much as we see all the things happening and we have all the, the subjects to go with it. We want to know where this would lead us as Christian people. So the story here is a guide for us, but where, where, which part of it, what part of it we would take. And not dwell upon. As we are doing, well, we, 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 in our stories, so we, we must, but there's a, there's a, 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 a greater. Purpose in this story, to see that God, after all you have done. God is still willing in your situation to take you, because he said, Nathan told him, prophet told him. Alright, since you repent, God has forgiven you. And then David changed his apparel, so we could take that to mean, or we could use it as a, 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 a thing that. He really did change his behavior and went to the house of God and became a different person. We are thankful to Almighty God that the story is there for us, to prevent us from falling into it. Because any situation that you see, there's a old code that's, if you see in the Bible, it's about the. Every story is for us as individuals to take a, a page out of that book. So we may not, we may not commit the same thing, but that doesn't happen, you know? God leads us through our own experience and in as much as we will feel that they should not do David, because David was an upstanding man. I said before, if we read it into context, we're going to see that this took place, although God said later down. Or before that, I have given thee all that thou hast in possession. Because Nathan told him in chapter, um, twelve, verse seven. Um, God said, I anointed the king over Israel and I delivered thee out of the hands of Saul. And I give thee thy master's house and thy master's wife unto thy bosom. And give thee the house of Israel and of Judah. Although all this hap- happened, we have to understand God have a purpose of allowing things to happen. Because when David came back from that battle and all was going well, these people forget. That it was God who was delivering them out of the hands of the enemy. And what they sang. Saul killed a thousand, David killed ten thousand. Just causing a defensiveness against the mortals. And when we take God out of the pit here, so God allowed David to fall in that, to show us up. That as good and close as a man get to God, you have to be very, very careful. At least we take the eye off, of the Creator and put it on the creature. God bless you.
Good night, everyone. I'm sorry that I joined half an hour late. And I really, really love the comments from everyone. Yes, Sister Dolores, really, really nice, really, really nice. Um, one thing I want to say with us checking ourselves. Think of this. When we are looking at something. They say beauty is in the eye of the beholder, right? We look at it with our perspectives. So even checking ourselves ends up being our perspective. So sometimes even when we checking ourselves, we justify ourselves. I know that we can identify with that. A lot of times people justify. Even people who don't know Christ, they still justify what they're doing. So even when we know Christ, we still justify what we're doing. So just checking yourself isn't a simple scenario. What we need to do, okay, um. The, what we need to do, yes, is every day submit to God. Every day go to God, Lord, I submit myself, forgive me of my sins. Guide me, because when we get up off our knees, we still need God's guidance. And every day. Seek more of the Holy Spirit in our lives. So that the gift of the Holy Spirit. Would be our characteristic and it wouldn't be a decision or selection. Process on, is this bad or not? Is this good or not? We wouldn't be doing a mental calculation on what we can or cannot do. Which is what we would do if we. Not. Bound to the gifts, not, not developed the gifts and bound to the spirit. We would be doing mental calculations, is this good, is this bad? But instead, we have to have the gift, the fruit, sorry, the fruit of the spirit. So developed in us, so that as the scenario comes up, our reaction. Would be love, joy, peace, long suffering, temperance, meekness, gentleness, faith. That would be our reaction, that would be what is there. And it wouldn't be a mental calculation and it wouldn't be that after we do the physical thing, then you have to say, oh, God, forgive me. So that's, so checking ourselves is not the best way to go. But to submit ourselves, ask for guidance daily. And develop more of the spirit so that our character would react with spirit. And leave the mortal in the grave, so we wouldn't have to deal daily with, oh my, I should not do that. We wouldn't have to deal with that scenario coming up all the time. Thank you very much. Good night.
Um, alright, so. I just want to, I'm gonna start with Sister Lady's point, you're absolutely right, of course, when you're doing. Your checking, when you're sitting. Checking, when you're sitting. And trying to kind of come to terms with some of the behavior, obviously. The Holy Spirit has to be a major part of that. It's not that, I didn't mean to make it sound as if you're sitting with yourself and. You're doing it by yourself and then adjudicating for yourself because obviously, a lot of us have gotten very good at justifying.
Koshel, excuse me, I'm not hearing anything.
Sorry, uh, you hear me now? Okay.
Yes, I am.
Alright, great, should be a little more audible now. No, what I was saying was that I didn't mean to make it sound as if this was a self-examination thing. Um. Although, when we have our communion service, there's a verse in there that talks about. Let a man examine himself. Because honestly, the only person, the persons that you cannot lie to, well, you can't lie to God, you could try, but you'd be fooling yourself. And the other person that you really can, although some people have gotten really good at it, um. The human being can't lie to themselves, you know yourself and obviously God knows you. But I didn't mean to make it seem as if this was something that you need to do by yourself, obviously, this is something that. Needs to, you need to include God in this and you need to be credible, so forgive me if I made it seem as if. This is something that you need to do by yourself, absolutely not. Because some people are good at justifying themselves and and making it seem as if, well, you know, it's not so bad when it actually is. Right, so that's the first thing. The other thing I just kind of wanna reiterate again. When we do the accounts of these persons and we talk about the rough patches in their lives. It's not to make them seem like villains, at the end of the day, we can't do that. The fact that they are in the Bible, it means that they are example for us as believers to go or not go a particular way. Please do not think that we are trying to make them seem less than they are. First of all, I have no jurisdiction to that because I know better than them. After fact, they're better than me by leaps and bounds and and yards, as does does they're they're better than. Why we are going the route that we are going. Is because unfortunately, the world has heard the same. I'm gonna go that way because that might. It is slowly, unfortunately, becoming. Duck, water for duck's back with the way that we talk about some of these things. Um. And people are going to ask you questions. I'm letting you know now, this generation is going to ask you questions and they're going to be hard questions. It's unbelievable, some of the things that I've heard young people talk about online. And well, concerning the Bible and Christianity, and I and all had to stop and be like, whoa. Alright, and sometimes it's things that eat that is easily, um. Yeah, yeah, the Bible, you know, the Bible talk about it already and it should be this. And then they come with a point that that's like, oh, okay, and it double guesses ever now you have to go back and check, yeah. They are going to ask some hard things, so it is important that all our bases are covered. All of it, we cannot just skip over the normal necessary, the normal rigmarole that we normally do. We have to talk about all of it, because that's the last year, the end of last year, that's why I said, we're gonna have some. Uncomfortable conversations and as uncomfortable as they are. We need to have them because it getting worse, it getting more uncomfortable with some of these conversations. In order to win some of these people, you have to know what is you doing. You have to know what is you doing, just talk about being a sheep among wolves, yes, sometimes. Sometimes you you have to be about, you have to know what is you doing, really and true, otherwise. Otherwise, right, so please, please don't misunderstand. I know it seems like we're taking a long time and to get through the. The stuff that that David did that wasn't so great, but we doing this for a purpose. So I'm asking all of us to just bear with us while we go through it and take away some of the developmental parts of it. Because me, I'm trying to grow, there's a lot of stuff that. So that's so where it's supposed to be and a lot of these accounts and the bad parts of it help me. Check if I in the same position as some of these people. And it helps me understand what to do versus what not to do and it gives me something to talk to God about as well. Sometimes I'm talking to God during during the day about some of these stories and asking him to help me identify if I in that position too. That has been helpful for me at least, I don't know if it's been helpful for anybody else, so. Um, with that being said, now we have a few minutes left, yeah, sometime. No, you're good, alright, anybody else?
Sister Koshel and everybody, I just wanna say, ending up here. Let us try to learn from the life of David. His strength, his weaknesses and his successes. And also his failures. And let us seek to become all that God wants us to be. That is my last contribution, amen.
Thank you.
Anybody else just to close off this view?
Sister Keshar, um. I was, I I am so happy to just sit. And listen and learn and understand, you know, this account really, as everybody. Said so far, is really for us to look at ourselves and to understand and to, you know, find out if. Where we too have faltered and like you said, when you're speaking to God, you know, you're asking if. Any of these um characteristics that David or even any other character portrayed, if you possess any. And I I am so thankful that these accounts are here for us. They are there for us, um, I'm looking at, I I I agree with, I agree with what was said. The notes that I took, I decided I wouldn't say anything because. I was agreeing with with what um like Sister Walcott and Sister Marcel and both even you and. Sister Pam said today, I'm really, really glad for the contributions. What I'm looking at David as a king. And how he was able to humble himself even as a king. And this speak, this speaks to me as, you know, we 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 look at leadership. And that is a good, that's that's good for somebody who. As as a leader, being humble is so important because being humble as a leader. It speaks, as I said, about proper leadership, you're not too big to be humble and actually. I I feel when you humble yourself as a leader, you will be admired and it will be easy for people to follow. So I am so, I am so, I am so excited, I'm so glad for this account. That it teaches us so many things, so many things, it opens up so many areas in our lives that we can follow. Thank you.
Yes, Sister Ford, and that that is an excellent point, that humility factor. Because as I was saying in the beginning, his moral compass never left him and he he sinned and um. He he wasn't as aware as he was supposed to be, but he definitely, all those good qualities that we like about David. Remained with him and he was able at the end of the day to identify where he went wrong, first of all, well. Through the the revelation of of Nathan and whatever, well, revelation of 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 the, well. Message that that God gave to Nathan, right, essentially, he was able to identify that he was wrong and that takes humility. It really, really does, being able to listen and hear when you're wrong. Um, and to be able to take when you're being corrected as well, because, you know, again, and this is, this is just before. I hand back over to Sister Marcel, this is something that has been ingrained in us, you know, um. When we, when we are children, the first teachers that we have are our parents. And so a lot of the times we feel like they know everything and as a result we feel like, you know, as well adults know everything. Adults know what they've experienced and they can speak from experience, they don't always know everything. And that is something that a lot of uh that we haven't made ourselves comfortable with. So, um, we also haven't been taught that learning is a lifelong thing. You never stop learning, no matter what, you leave the schoolhouse and you continue to learn. Because life teaches you every day through experiences, those same experiences that, you know, children look up to for their with their parents. Um, those experiences teach you as well, if you let them, right, um. And so being humble and knowing when to. Knowing when you need, when when you need to take correction is a part of of being humble. And is a part, as you said, Sister Ford, of being a good leader. And not just, and and being a good leader, but also being a decent human being and a a human being that shows Jesus. Right, um, because Jesus was humility personified. And if it is we claim that we're following Christ, the first thing we ought to be is humble. And it is a hard thing for a lot of adults to do because some of us, a lot of us feel as if, well, I beg and nobody can't tell me. Nothing. And that is not the case, you have to be humble and I'm thinking of Reverend James because he really and truly. He he used to sit through some things and just not say anything and. You know, he would just not be like, okay, okay, and at times when you felt like, hey, no, use the past, say something, respond. And he would just sit there and take it in, I don't know what was going through his mind at the time, but. You know, being even even where he was, he was the one person that I could think of. And there are others that I could call, but he's the one person I think of who really did exemplify humility and being humble. Even where he was and even as much as he knew, so um that is something that I am still looking on. Um, there are times where I have to be corrected and it's kind of like, ew, what? And, you know, you really have to pull yourself back and think about, you know, you have to have to be humble and this is for your own good. So we'll we'll end there and of course we have some some more reading to go and do, I think we. Now, anyway, we'll one one step at a time, one step at a time, but we'll end off there for today. Um, I hope that this was informative for everyone and I hope that you all go back and review the accounts and stuff. So that we and and read so that we can all learn. And we can all grow as Christians and know how to survive in the world as it is. Because I don't know if you notice, but it's not getting any better, as was foretold by scripture, so you really need to be on your Ps and Qs. So God bless you all this afternoon, this evening, and I will hand back over to Sister Marcel who will close up for the evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Sister Koshel. I think I can speak for everyone. This evening and say that um our our study this afternoon was a very. Um, enlightening and for me also a very learning experience. Uh. It is important, the the thing about it is I say, you know, people always look at the one bad thing that you have ever done in their life. And they hardly look at the all the ninety nine good things that you have done, but. I'm still saying we are thankful to God this evening for David's story, I'm just saying our story now. And I wish to God that God's people will truly learn from this. Don't let it be just we read the story and we say, well, you know, David should not have and he should not have and what. As Sister Keshel keeps reminding us, we are humans first, at the end of the day, we are humans first. And we are no better than David, trust me, we are not better than David by a long shot if we think we are, we are not. But it is important, it is important that we, you you know, David, um. David loved God, you know, David had loved God, David had loved God. And because he had loved God, he was able to, at the end of the day, understand because you 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 realize what he said. He he realized that in in Psalm fifty one, we got that to read. He said, he told in praying to God for forgiveness, he was saying, I have sinned against you. So he realized that, so we too ought to realize that when we sin. We not only sin against the person to whom we have done something wrong. But we have to think about the fact that whatever we do, whatever sin we commit, we have sinned against God. Because we are his children, we are his representatives, you know, and um. God is really and truly for months now, since last year. And I think since the year before. I realized that God has been bringing to us the. This. Uh, characteristic. As a child of God. Of humility. And maybe this coming because we need to really and truly understand. He what humility really is about, because some people feel that if they humble and they don't say anything and all of that. That they are weak, but it's not about that, it's not about that, humility is not about that. And as we are seeing, especially especially all of us, but especially as leaders. This is one corrupt treat we must possess and possess it well. By the power of God, Sister Keshel, you truly, all through the the story I always think about. About Reverend James, he really personified humility. Humility is sometimes you have to hear and you didn't hear, you have to see and you didn't see. Let God do some stuff, let the Holy Spirit do some work. Sister Nadine, thank you so much for, and as a matter of fact, I want to thank everyone on the platform for their contributions. And those who did not speak, I know that you have taken in and you have absorbed all what you have heard this evening. And you would understand that we are saying this evening, all of us are saying, we have to be able to check ourselves. By the power of the Holy Spirit on a daily basis. So that we would be able to stay in line with God's. Plan and his will for our life. And not ever feel that we are too strong or we are too there. That nothing can happen to us. We know that the moment we take our our glance off, we can fall into a lot of trouble. So may God bless us this evening. And all of us on the platform, thank you again, Sister Keshel, I just wanna say thanks to everyone for being here. And now we would see as usual why the. I didn't want to call his name, why this person always have to try to get in our way. Always have to try to get in our way, but we thank God that he do ever win, you know, he does not ever win. At the end of the day, God always wins, so we thank God this evening. And so at this time, we will now close, I'll just, uh, well, I'll just say the benediction at this time and may God bless us as we are in our homes. Everyone this evening, God bless your homes and your families. And well, until we meet Sunday, peace, God is our communion service, so may God bless us all. Now may the saving grace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the love of God, the fellowship of the Holy Spirit rest and abide with us all now and forevermore.